I want to welcome everybody to the Asbury Park zoning board of adjustment regular meeting Tuesday, August 9th, 2022. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the board secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Chris, would you please call us to order?
Sure think so. Calling the roll, Mr. Harris? Absent?
Absent.
Ms. Potter?
Here.
Tim Sislick?
Here.
Sorry about the pronunciation. Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Mr. Scully?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Avalone?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have some housekeeping issues. First up is the resolution for the approval of the City by the Sea vet.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for the City by the Sea application.
No, there's no second, so you're gonna have to just call the roll.
Just call the roll then. So, Mr. Slick?
Yes.
Not gonna get that right all night, but...
It's slick.
So the motion, the motion, but the resolution passes, so we'll move on to the second.
Okay. And I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the denial of 503 Eighth Avenue LLC.
I'll second.
All right.
You can't.
I can't because I voted yes.
Exactly.
I'll second.
No. Okay.
All right, so calling the roll on that. Mr. Avalone?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
And Mr. Sislick?
Yes.
Just give me the pronunciation.
It's slick.
Slick, that's easy then.
Just like great slick.
Got it.
First time through the night, apologize to the audience for getting this right. All right, you're good to go on the next one.
All right, so if anyone's here for the cannabis application, the breakwater treatment and wellness corps, that will not be heard tonight. The notices were deficient, so we did not have jurisdiction to hear the application, so I'll make a motion to carry the breakwater treatment and wellness corps, 807 Memorial Drive, 906 First Avenue, to September 13th, 2022, with new notices.
I'll second.
Calling the roll, we have Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Mr. Slick?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Avalone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we finally get to 1205 Pine Street, Mr. and Mrs. Barnett. Please come up.
Do we have a way to project?
Oh, let's see. Possibly.
Can you help them set up their...
I'll make a motion for a 10-minute recess to help you guys. Thank you.
I'll second.
What do we have?
Recession.
Oh, okay.
We're calling everybody back in order after the 10-minute session. So we're back on?
I hope so. Give him a second. Go ahead. We're good.
Good. All right, we're back on, on the record as it relates to the zoning we're being for 8922 after we had this short break as it related to setting everything up for the application.
Roll call again.
Roll call, all right. So we have Mr. Harris, absent. Ms. Potter?
Here.
Mr. Slick?
Here.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Mr. Scully?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Avalone?
Here.
All right, so we have to pass a traffic engineer for the cannabis application, so I make a motion to allow Gary Dean to be our traffic engineer for the cannabis application only.
I'll second.
All right, and we have a roll call on that as well. Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Mr. Slick?
I'm staying.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Scully?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Avalone?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay, so now back to the Mr. and Mrs. Barnett. What is it? 1205 Pine Street, Block 2201, Lot 10. Please proceed. I know you were here last time, maybe we could have a quick synopsis of what happened in the last meeting?
Right, right, right. John Recheck, Todd Recheck, on behalf of Scott and Andrea Barnett. Well, we rechecked the building and we moved it back five feet and did other matters that we hoped the board would be more amenable to. We do have a power point. They have a power point they're gonna go through first.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Recheck. Please proceed.
And I know everybody was part of the swarm, but we'll just do the same, just to make sure the record's clear. Everybody that's gonna testify just withstand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, one at a time, please take it into the record.
Scott?
Andrea?
Larry Serangle. Architect.
Thank you.
Edward Ness.
And professional?
Engineer and planner.
Thank you. And I'll just swear on the...
Yes, please.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And again, stating your name for the records, please.
Tom Miller, board planner.
Doug Cullen, board engineer.
Thank you, you may proceed. Thank you.
So this is the house as is today, literally today. And last time I felt like I wanted to be a little bit more organized, so we put this together real close. This is who we are. We're not builders and we don't want to flip this house. We want to live here. We are contributing members of Marlboro for 28 years and we'd like to do the same here. So here are our timelines so far. We actually purchased the house in 2019 to use as a weekend summer home, but we really started to, we continued to love the area and want to make it our permanent home. In fact, as of next week, this is our permanent mailing address. The house needs a lot of work. In fact, it needs so much work, people didn't realize how much work it needed. We asked the tax assessor to come in and take a look, and they did, and they said, wow, yeah, and they lowered our taxes because there is a lot of foundational, and we'll go through some of the problems that the house currently has that we are striving to fix. So this is the focus of the renovation. We want to fix the foundation and all the settling, the floors slanting. The back of the house, the foundation is very poor and poorly done, and at the front of the house, which used to be a porch, is also poorly done. We are also trying to maintain the existing structure and the style of the Dutch colonial. We weren't trying to raise it. One contractor, architect, came in and said, oh, you want to do that, you should just level the whole house. So we went into this thinking, we don't want to level the whole house, we'd like to make it work. But we also would need to expand it from just a two-bedroom home. The kitchen as it stands now is not a modern kitchen in any stretch of imagination, not even a dishwasher. This is my dishwasher. Okay, so, and we'd like to add a master bedroom as well. We also do really want a front porch, so we're gonna add a front porch and hopefully make this comfortable for the next 28 years. We would really like to start. We actually started this process back in...
July 2020.
July 2020. And, you know, you require a lot of things, and when we realized we were coming up against so much we didn't understand, we did not put the application through, and we've been working the entire year again to come here as we did in June. So that's kind of our story. Now, last, two months ago, we came here and you requested that we move the structure back to accommodate the front line of the existing house should stay where it is. So we moved our structure back rather than using some of the porch that was enclosed and is part of the house now. So to return that to porch, we moved the whole thing back five feet. You also said you didn't like the multiple roof types, so our architect worked on streamlining and redesigning the roof design, and he's gonna explain that more. We also, you also asked to have a single type of roof material. The porch at the time needed a different, because it was extended out, needed a different type of material, so now it's, we changed the pitch of that. No c metal roof required. You also requested that the windows and the drawing all be consistent in design. We did that. And we have identified siding and garage door fencing that will maintain the look and charm of the neighborhood. In fact, we've seen other garage doors that look like that in the neighborhood. So we believe we changed all the things that you requested. So I'm gonna let Larry address the roof line.
Good evening, everybody.
Before we move on, Mrs. Barnett, I have to ask the board if anybody has any questions for you first.
Very good. Anyone have any?
I do not.
Anyone? All right, board professionals, anybody in the public for Mrs. Barnett? Okay, please proceed.
Yes, you know, basically, as Mr. Barnett said, we addressed everything that we saw on the outline, and the big thing to me is the roof line. I'd like to start with that. And if you looked at your drawings, which we sent you, you know, the drawing A5 does show now that we actually incorporated the gambrel roof on the right side elevation, and we matched exactly the pitch of the front of the house. We also used dormers in the front of the house, which are kind of conducive to the way the gambrel roof works. We have right now dormers on the side of the house in the other bedrooms, which kind of replicated that detail. You also can see that the front porch, we raised the elevation so we didn't have to use standing c metal roof. We have a steeper pitch, and we're able to keep all the roof material, the shingles, the same throughout the whole house. And, yeah, the important thing is, you know, the gambrel roof idea has been maintained, as you can see. Another important feature of design is the way we set the house back, the five-foot idea. We were able to pretty much replicate the porch and align with the house next door in terms of the setback pretty closely. We also kept the elevation, the front facade of the garage, five foot back from the main front of the house, as you can see on drawing A-1. Let's switch over. And going back to the elevations, we also have all the windows, which are now consistently the same in terms of mullions and things like that. We eliminated arched windows, we basically have all the same double-hung windows throughout. Another important matter which we wanted to address was, we have roof lines. You can see on the roof plan, drawing A6, how the roof lines are integrated. We also show you the gutters and downspouts to show how all roofs are properly joined.
Is this part, first, do you have this on as a document?
As A6?
Yeah.
Yes, part of it.
Okay.
It's part of the package.
Okay. Please proceed, Mr. Serangle.
Essentially, we have now, related to the existing house, the Dutch colonial gambrel roof, and reduced, you know, just the roof types that we had before, just to having the main gambrel roof with the dormers by the windows and the hip roofs at the porch and in the back of the house by the master bedroom, a bathroom addition.
Mr. Serangle?
I think that's pretty much it. The drawings speak for themselves, I believe. We answered everything that we were told to do.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Serangle? So I'm assuming that the garage now is five feet back?
I actually have a couple of questions to hopefully shed light on how that is gonna work.
Yeah.
Are you guys able to put the revised building plans up? That'll help us. So go to the floor plan sheet.
That would be A4.
There we go. So this is A4, the revised floor plans. I'm sorry, what's the date? Do you recall? So we have it in there?
Essentially, it shows the porch.
Hang on.
And the house going back five feet, and the garage setback five foot from the main facade.
So these are from 7/27? Okay.
Yes.
The 7/27 revision date. Okay, so the floor plan is dimensioned as 57 feet, 1 inch overall.
Right.
And that's measured from the new front porch to the back wall of the house.
Right, with the kitchen.
Okay. Now, do you happen to have the original set of plans?
The original site plan is shown on drawing A2.
Right, but Andrea and Scott, do you guys have the original floor plan?
The ones we presented in junior setting?
Yeah. If not, it's fine.
We'd have to find...
I can look it up.
So I'm going to just state it. So those plans show an overall length of the building from front porch to rear wall of 52 feet, 1 inch. So the building's longer. When I overlay those two versions of plans, I get more building in the back of the house, but I still have the front line of the building in the same place. So the front porch that they want to have is in front of the existing enclosed porch on the house. So I want to, you know, I want to understand better dimensionally where the larger building is starting from, where it's ending up in the back, because the board was receptive to you guys maybe having a rear yard setback, as long as they were getting the, honoring the front building.
Aligning the setbacks in the front.
Right. And I'm not seeing that from the plan revision, so I just want to make sure. And since I see this dimensionally, you know, I want to understand, the building's longer. So how much longer into the back is it, or is it still measuring from the front?
Right.
So that's one concern. And so when we figure that out, then we'll have a better understanding of where that five-foot offset is for the garage wall.
Which is my state, my question.
Well, I'm sure the other board members want to make sure that, you know, we're satisfying that, that it's really ending up where we want it to be. And if you want to take a minute and we can, you know, kind of compare plans or whatever, because this is one of those, you know, pictures worth a thousand words kind of thing, and I don't know that we want to spend the thousand words.
Well, are you saying...
But that's, my concern right now is, the difference in the two sets of plans shows the revised plans show a longer building, but there's no relationship to, you know, the site on these plans, so I can't say, okay, it's exactly so many feet from the front property line. But when I overlay it on the old version of the floor plan, it shows that, that front porch, you know, is still in the same place, the enclosed existing front porch is in the same place, and the new front porch is in front of it, closer to the street.
Yeah, I can explain, Don, if you like.
Okay.
What happens is, we pushed the whole building back five feet, and from the last presentation, the front of the porch was 13 foot nine. We pushed the front two foot back, and that's why we have 15 foot nine. If you look at the plan, the actual, a part of the old porch...
So, so part of my problem too is, on the revised set of plans, when I tried to take a measurement for the front yard setback...
Okay.
On sheet one, the site layout plan says it's 1 inch equals 20, but it doesn't actually measure 1 inch equals 20.
Right, it was more of a reference key plan that shouldn't be scaled. We used, you know...
Okay, but that's, you know, really important to what we're doing here. We have to understand where, not just the existing building is in relationship to the property lines, but where these new improvements are. And where you're showing, I mean, this, this plan shows, you know, the existing steps are inside the new porch, which tells me the new porch is in front of the existing building.
Right, if you look at...
So, so again, it feels like you're still closer to the street than we want you to be.
From the last meeting, we were told if we went back a couple feet with the porch in the front, that's why we went from 13.9 to 59, and then pushed from that point the building five foot back, we went from a 25-foot...
I think they, what we were talking about was the garage itself was supposed to be pushed back five feet.
Well, there's two things.
The garage itself from the beginning, from the structure.
But we were also talking about the beginning, the front of the structure, so...
Right.
I think we need to determine the front of the structure and then the garage conversation.
Because we can't determine where the garage falls until we have that answer.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, so...
So wait, so you've moved the entire structure back five feet, so you're gonna, is there, there is a foundation now that runs from the house all the way to the front of what I would consider the old, the enclosed porch? That is a solid foundation, correct?
No. I think they had testified before, that was one of the problems.
That is one of the big problems.
Because the floor in that room is collapsing or something, and because there's really no foundation.
So you're moving the foundation of the whole house back?
No.
We will refore the front foundation and the back foundation, which are both not done to code and not done well, and the building is sinking in both front and back of the building.
Yeah.
If you were correct to say that our addition, you know, combined with the new existing house, started back five foot more than we had before.
The new structure.
The new structure. Just if you look at the hatch lines...
How does the front porch align with the other, Nate, other houses in the neighborhood? How does that align?
Right now, it's probably within a foot of the neighbor next door, Scott.
So I actually, I've done this three times now, but this afternoon I went out and I measured a bunch of porch lines in our neighborhood. We will be about a foot in front of the house immediately next door.
No, no. Where is it now in relationship to the house next door?
Right now, we are in parallel. We are above the same.
Yeah.
I want to keep you there.
Right now...
With this redesign, we will be about a foot in front of them now. Hold on, they have five, six steps coming down from the front of the steps. If you count down the steps, we are actually behind them. I know you don't count that way, but that's how we look at it.
Because you're gonna need steps as well, correct?
Sorry?
You're gonna need steps as well.
We are gonna need fewer steps than they have.
We need three steps.
And those steps, with those steps, we will come out less, we will be farther away.
Yeah, we don't, we don't count steps.
I understand.
Yeah.
Now, if we want to talk about a sister house, a house that's literally identical to ours, a Dutch colonial, one block away, there is a Dutch colonial on Pine, exactly the same house as ours. They are 14 feet from the curb, much, much closer than we would be even with this redesign.
Well, we can't help what happened in the past. We can only help going forward.
I understand. We looked at, we looked at what you asked us to do last month. We pushed the house back as far as we possibly could. If we push back any farther, we literally lose the entire living room because there's a large chimney in our living room now, and if we put the, if we be and state the old porch exactly as is, we have to destroy the chimney. We also have to move the steps to the, to the second floor because those steps are literally where the front door is. With this redesign, the front door of our house will be exactly where the front door was in the previous architecture.
Right, if you look at the drawing right now.
This, this, yeah, this is the old architecture, but the front door would be exactly where the front door was in the original design when there was a porch. The porch itself comes out a little bit farther because we actually recessed the front door to give ourselves a little more room on the porch. And we have to redo the foundation anyway in the front of the house. That whole area has to be redone to be able to support the porch and the living room. So there's literally no room for us to push back anymore than we already have unless we destroy our living room and have to move the steps.
It's, it's a hardship.
But I'm a little confused as to what Donna was saying. She's saying the house now is longer than what your previous design was.
That I don't understand.
So, meaning...
On the plans, 57 feet.
So how did it get longer unless you made the redesign longer?
How deep is the porch?
I'm trying to figure it out. No.
How deep is the porch right now, Don?
There is no porch right now.
No, I mean, the proposed porch.
The proposed porch. How deep is the proposed porch?
Seven.
Yeah. That 57-foot dimension is actually to the overhang line, if you look at that, Donna, but the new construction part, we should have given the overall for that.
Well, I mean, overhang is 18 inches at most? And it doesn't, it's not, I mean...
In the previous design...
Zoom back into that, Scott. Sorry.
I'm trying to zoom in.
I know, it's so non-intuitive using that thing.
Yeah, so this 57, one, yeah, this is actually going all the way up to here...
It's 55, that's a two...
To the second step, whereas the previous one only went to the edge of the, I got too many midos open.
Oh, wow, that just made me sick. Sorry.
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 So this, this one, 52, just goes to the edge of the porch. The one with the 57 went to the second step.
So what is the eve? Is it 18 inches? Two feet?
Yeah, it's really 55 dot 57.
So the building's still three feet longer than the old version?
But we pushed everything back. I mean, we tried to match...
I'm not seeing that. So it would be really helpful if this plan showed us the dashed line of where the existing building wall is, and that's why I did the overlay I did. So, and again, if we had actual, you know, dimensional relationship of where it is on the property compared to the existing front building wall, that would help us understand how this is working, so we know exactly how many feet into the backyard you're extending because we're gonna have a rear setback issue, and then also whether we're resolving this front yard issue. And again, depending on how the board members feel about how, how much this new porch should either be in front of the neighbor's porch or in line with the neighbor's porch as, as far as a setback and streetscape alignment.
We're requesting a hardship on, so that, that extra foot will allow us to step into the house and have a foot rather than to be on top of the stairwell, which, so that's part of the problem. And that chimney, it was quite...
So, so in the floor plan, you've proposed a new eat-in kitchen, a dining room, a living room, and then sort of a little alcove off the living room for this piano sitting, whatever, and then the front porch.
Correct.
So, so you're saying there's no way to minimize any of those living spaces so that you can still have the front porch in line with the existing front setback line on the block?
We...
I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at the floor plan, and if you take out the piano space and start the front porch there, you still have a living room, you have a dining room, you have an eat-in kitchen, the stairs don't move, the entry into the garage doesn't have to move. I'm, I'm trying to work it out, you're telling me, you know...
Well, if you move back the front porch, now the building line...
The entry to the garage would essentially, it's supposed to be five feet from the front of the house, correct? And that would have to be pushed back.
Correct, Russell.
Yeah. I, I, look, I, my position hasn't changed. I, I agree that I would really like to see a plan that has the existing front of the house and the porch lining up with the house next door. I just think it makes the most sense.
And I think that there's a plans, there's room to move.
There is.
There's plenty of space to fiddle with some things.
Five foot.
You know, I understand what you're saying, the door would be in the same spot, but perhaps even you're doing a lot of constructions, move your door a little to the other side. Now you're not on the top of the steps. to the other side. Now you're not on the top of the steps when you walk in.
So let me just, I, I want to make sure I'm understanding as we move forward. How many board members find it, you know, really, really important, close to, you know, ten in importance, that the new front porch be in line with the, say, the existing porch on the, on the house next door? Maintain the front setback.
It's important to me.
So Wendy, John, Russell, Chris, so the majority of the board members do not want the front of your house to stick out past the neighbor's house. Do you have to hold that line?
We're, we're not gonna do that, so I guess we're done. No, I'm, I'm done. This has been a very painful experience, and as someone who's not a builder and is just trying to make this house a beautiful house, I don't understand any of this.
Across the street.
So I'm really, really sorry, but we'll just move someplace else, and we won't be in Asbury. And it'll be very disappointing for me, and I know you guys don't care.
That's not true. Don't say.
No, you guys don't care. This is, this is ridiculous.
No, 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 sir. Actually, we do care. We're volunteers. We, we volunteer our time. I've been sitting here volunteering my, volunteering my time twice a month for seventeen years. I care deeply, and I care deeply about my neighbors. So you know what? I reject that.
And we're also neighbors of yours.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
And we, we've been working on this for two years. I just lost my patience. It's not your fault.
I, I understand that, but don't, don't come, don't become before this board and your neighbors and say we don't care, because that is absolutely.
That's why we're here, Mr. Barnett, is because we care more than most.
And we find out we're a parent.
And look, there's.
Because I don't understand why some of these changes are, why, why is it that if we move the front porch two feet up, why is that so terrible compared to all of the other houses in our neighborhood?
It's not a balance.
Wait, wait, please stop. Please, please stop, Mr. Barnett, Mr. Barnett. Please, I, I don't want to have an argument.
What's there to hold on to?
This is not right. This is not right, Mr. Barnett.
Scott, well, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Yes.
What were you gonna say?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mr. Betts is a civil engineer. He's also a player. He, he appeared last year and testified on the Boll project. Do you think we can proceed? All right, Scott, Scott, let us go forward.
I'm sorry, so he testified at the last hearing?
He didn't testify last year. He did, he was a juror.
Trying to qualify.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll qualify.
Please.
Okay, very, yeah, but.
So we are continuing?
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue. It's, it's no sense throwing a child out with the bathwater. Let's, let's see what we can resolve. It's, it's always a compromise. Okay, Mr. Betts, where did you go to school?
Cornell University. I graduated nineteen seventy-nine with a bachelor of degree and also nineteen eighty with a master's.
And you've been practicing as a civil engineer in New Jersey for that long?
I've been practicing for, as a licensed engineer since nineteen eighty-five. That's thirty-nine years. I'm also, I'm also a licensed planner. I've licensed since nineteen ninety.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Betts. Is it, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Before you proceed, I actually have to finish with Mr. Serangle first.
Okay.
So, um, do you have anything else that you would like to go over with the board, Mr. Serangle?
Just to summarize, I think what Donna was trying to say, the building went back two feet to accommodate the porch and the dimension, you know, try to close to what's next door, and then the addition part went back five feet. So there is a little more square footage from the first time around.
All right, so clarify that again. When you say the building went back two feet, do you mean the?
Let's just say, if you look at.
The proposed.
Right, from the original site plan, our porch started at thirteen foot nine. Now we're back at fifteen foot nine. Then we went back five feet with everything so that we could get the five foot.
On that side? Right, okay.
So it is.
So you reduced the previous version by two feet from the, the front is pushed back two feet?
Right, and it's probably.
But that's not quite what we had asked for, though.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's about eighteen inches.
Like maybe a foot, yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen inches from the neighbors.
And they're sixty or fifty feet away, and we did our best without trying to take way too much.
But I think Donna's point that perhaps you have some space on the first floor that you can modify it. You, you have some type of alcove for a piano, and you have, I mean, there are things that can be done to accommodate that sixteen inches, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So may I speak about that?
Then we'd go back.
One, one person at a time, Mrs. Barnett.
Do you want to proceed? Naturally, it'll throw the garage off, but maybe if we move it back, we'll get a little consideration on the garage.
What you could do.
Go ahead.
Instead of make a seven foot sixteen porch, if we made it five foot six, then it would line up exactly. And still, five foot six is still, you know, decent. It's not like you're gonna have a large park. You just want to have a couple of chairs out there. Would that do something, the board would have to consider if we could make it line up exactly, just have a.
So the front of the house is not lining up. You're proposing a five foot six, six foot porch, so the front of the porch is.
The porch will line up with the porch next door. I think that would still be conducive to.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah. What I'm proposing is our porch right now is seven foot two, and so that we can make the porch line up with our neighbor's porch to the north, we can make it five foot six rather than seven foot.
I, I also think it's important for the, the, the front of the house. I think we're, I'm talking more about the front of the house where the porches match.
Yes.
In, you know, in, in, in depth.
Okay.
Um, I don't think a five foot porch really gives any, anyone.
Yeah, we don't want to, we don't want to take away the livability of the porch.
It, yeah, now it's just.
Also defines.
It's, you know, five, five feet, it's.
Five foot six, yes.
Five foot six. It, it's, it's not really.
But then what happens?
The porch that was originally there for the house. That's all we're, I think that's all, I know I'm asking for is just to start with the original front of the house and the original porch and go back from that.
Right.
I think there's a lot of availability and a lot of openness for me, and I think the rest of the board. If we can just start with the original front of the house and the original porch, putting that back where it matches the house next door, I think there's a lot of availability to do and capture what you're looking to do.
What'll happen is, I think you're gonna start to squeeze the space in the living room and things like that.
I know, it's.
So what, so what is the dimensions of the living room space?
Seventeen by twenty-one.
It's a little house.
It's a little house. Thank you for saying that. It's a little house. And I don't, I don't have a problem with you expanding and building a new kitchen, and those are all great things, and we're all in, in favor of that, but I think what you're trying to do is take a small, little cottage house and turn it into something that it's not.
But isn't that all renovations?
No, it isn't. No. No, I think there's a, a sense of balance and a sense of of effort for the original design, and what we're really trying to do is to keep some original elements so that it keeps character in the neighborhood. So if everyone's building different, different things at different times, it doesn't really give you a sense of place, and that's one of the things that's important for us here.
And, and this is a five thousand square foot lot. This is not seventy-five hundred. This is our, our standard rectangle lot, our minimum plot size in town. So, you know, the fact that it's a smallish house compared to some of the other, you know, that might be on seventy-five hundred square foot and larger lots, you know, as you get on the avenue. Obviously, it's not one of our fifty-fifties on a side, side street, right? But, um, yeah, it has potential, but it needs to be in, in scale.
It needs to be in scale, yes. Yeah, it is out, it's out of, it is, it's, it's out of scale.
We just have one more.
The fireplace, in our very first attempt at this, we, we took out the fireplace and moved it to the back of the house. It was a totally different structure.
I, I don't think you need to move the fireplace.
It, it keeps that living space, you know, difficult to match with, with that fireplace.
May I interject?
What do you, hold on, what do you mean by that?
No, we have to stick with one person at a time, Mr. Betts. Mr. Serangle, are you complete with your testimony?
I just brought one thing by.
Well, that's sitting at, situated as it is right now.
Yeah, that's. Because one of the risers, you can see it's only like three foot six. The door needs three foot to swing in.
It's hardship.
Yeah.
It's a hardship.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let's go on to explain. If we took the living room wall, the living room by the piano, and pushed back that wall one foot six along with the covered porch, therefore the porch is seven foot, going back a foot and a half, would you be open to the idea that, I know we worked hard to make the five foot setback of the garage to that living room wall. If we did that, the setback would go to three foot six. Would that be a consideration, at least by pushing the whole house back to allow us to have three foot six rather than five foot for the garage?
I would like to see the front of this house, the entire front of this house comply.
Meaning, starting at where it is right now?
And going from there.
And going, and going back.
No, not starting from where it is now, starting from where it used to be.
Where the, yes, sorry, yes.
Basically, making the porch back to where it was, which kills the living room.
Then the house.
Then you only have fifteen foot of space in the back of the house. If we go back any farther, it's.
A setback.
Right in the back, right, just to keep going back.
I think side yard and rear setbacks will be easier for us to digest if we can get the front of this house in scale and in the right placement with our setbacks. Front yard setbacks are for me the most challenging. If we can get that with, with the garage, then I think we can play ball.
So if we go to joint A two, the existing site plan, your thought is you want to keep it. Right now, we're twenty foot back to the house. That's where you want to see the house start with the porch.
Yes.
Essentially saying that bring back the porch to where it used to be, that existing office and entry. That's what.
I think that would be the ideal place to start, yes.
It is a hardship because of the, because of where the stairs are.
Right.
And where the fireplace is. It, it does make that a very awkward space. It's a little space. We live in that space right now because what is the covered porch or enclosed porch is a small office. So we are existing in that space right now. So we know the size.
I understand, but, but we're talking about giving.
But the doorway with, with the covered front porch, with the enclosed front porch, the door, we can actually walk in and have a few steps before getting to that doorway.
I understand.
Yeah.
But I don't know that you're thinking about all the space that you're going to gain by returning the house to its original.
Layout.
Layout. And that's how these houses were originally built with the stair and the fireplace sort of close to the front. It's the original layout and design of those types of houses. So it's not unusual. It's just unusual for you because you didn't know it in that time, and you've been living in the space differently. But you're gonna be gaining a lot of extra space, so you're gonna be hopefully living in your entire home in a different way than just in that front bit. But it, it is important that we try our best to line those two houses up just because of where they are, who they are together. The house that you talked about on Pine, I think I probably know. It's probably the one that's next to me. There, again, there's this.
No, it's the other way. It's by Sunset. It's a yellow Dutch colonial.
The yellow one, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe every other house is forward, and we're asking with this new design, I'm, I'm sorry that the numbers are not lining up. We were told it was just.
Well, let, let Donna.
So, so let me, let me, because I'm trying to, you know, do the math and I don't have a lot of dimensions. So on the existing floor plan, I'm sorry, is this A? A two, okay, so on that A two. So what we're looking for is to hold this building wall line that's on the inside of the office, right, along that landing for the stairs. That's, that existing office, existing entry, that's what we want to maintain as front porch in the, in the new concept. Is the board opposed to a vestibule within the front porch? To provide that, we want to be able to come in the house without falling into the room. But it's within the porch area. You know, maybe it's a kind of a bow style, maybe it's a square. But it just comes out five or six feet within the porch as an enclosure. So they have a foyer before falling into the living room when they come in. That way, they're not, you know, swinging open the door into the stairs.
I think it sounds like a reasonable suggestion.
Then they can hold their stair and fireplace alignment. And then everything else, you know, goes backwards into the backyard, however much you guys want or need. And it doesn't have to be symmetrical, right? The left side of the house could be deeper than the right side of the house or vice versa, depending on how, again, for the garage.
But how's the garage offset then?
So, so I'm thinking.
I mean, in order to meet the ordinance, Donna, it has to be five feet offset.
Yeah, so that, that line, right, the landing, the front building wall line that we're talking about, that existing inside the office, inside the, like, where the stair landing is, we would use that to count back five feet. So then the garage would be five feet back from that. And that kind of lines up, let me go back to page four.
Excuse me, Donna, I just did a little red line for you.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I, I, I have to talk this through in my head. So, yeah, so then, so then the front wall of the garage lines up kind of with the stair landing? Or, you know, maybe the first stair, and so it, you know, just pushes the right side of the, of the floor pan, floor plan back five feet. They can still come out in this mudroom and use this hallway. You know, in the, in the space between the kitchen and the, and the dining room. I, I think it, again, I think it can work. It's just whether they're gonna be flexible enough to, I mean, it does reduce the size of the living room that they wanted, and I don't know if it means, you know, so flip that to the inside and just push your dining room back and then push your kitchen back. Have, you know, your piano space on the inside rather than against the outside. So let's see the red line.
I think we've done, we've done a brilliant job at giving them a, a lot of options. We are not here, our job is not to design their property. It's to tell them what's acceptable and what's not.
That's out of what you're thinking.
And, and, and to that point, we would require you to provide new designs regardless of, of, you know, how we proceed.
Yeah, the board is gonna need to see this, you know, put on paper. We can't just.
Right, I, I, you know, we can't approve something based on, based on what may or may not happen.
Just need to get.
And it should include the site plans we can look at setbacks in real time.
Can I just ask if last, when we first met last month, why wasn't it asked that we just start the house in right where it was?
I, I thought, I think we did say that.
I think we did.
Yeah, I think I said I wanted it to see it lined up pretty much with the sister house next door, which is the way.
Pretty much, so we thought a foot would be okay.
We were very sensitive to it, so. It's not just your house. We, we hold this pretty much with all the applications. The, the front yard setback and making sure houses line up are really important to us.
It, it, I, I respect what you're saying. I just don't see it on the street that I live on.
Think you probably see it more than you think.
No, I actually looked for it, and on the, on the, on the avenues, I walked around and I saw, yeah, on the avenues, there was a pretty consistent, but on the side streets, I mean, you've got across the street from us, it comes out to the sidewalk, and it's, it's a disaster building, and that's allowed to be there.
We, we spoke about that building. Yeah, we did. We made reference to that building in the last meeting.
So, and then on, all on Pine Street, they're all different. On the other side towards Sunset, they're all different. So, yes, I respect what you're saying. I went with that eye and I looked, and I still see room for, we thought, a foot. And also, when you look at the house in front of us, two houses, which look nothing alike, they just happen to have been built at a similar time. I don't know their history. One is a Dutch colonial and one is not. So to call them sisters is, I understand you're saying the sisters in the.
I'm not calling those houses sister houses. I'm calling the house you own and the house next door.
That's what I'm talking about. That house is a sister. It looks nothing like it. The only sistering is.
In the scale, in the size, how it's placed on the property, your two houses are pretty much, I, so as far as footprint. pretty much, I, so as far as the footprint and the height and the setbacks, it's almost identical. Different, there's different elements to it. That's why I don't call it a twin house. I call it a sister house. It comes from the same DNA and it is set on the property in the same way.
If the, Mr. Schrengel seems to feel he could probably get, get these plans in in two weeks. I understand September is pretty busy, but.
Unfortunately, we have no time in September, Mr. Reed. Ten eleven is, is the next date.
And, and we didn't get a chance to discuss, but are the roof lines acceptable now? I mean, because I'd like, I'd like to know what else is still.
Right. Are there some parts that you, that we comply with so I can at least know if the client wants to proceed?
I, I think, you know, basically what, what the board is saying is if you can, if you can just give us the front setbacks that we're requiring. And then it's, you can stretch to the back, you know, we, we're a lot more lenient when it comes to the back setbacks and the rear setbacks and the side setbacks than we are to the front setbacks.
Well, and they, they are already requesting a side yard setback.
Yeah.
Variants, so.
So the front right now is priority.
Pretty much what we said last time.
It is everything. Everything comes from that. For me.
No, 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 no.
Could I just make one?
Please, Doug, yes.
The newest plans, they note an impervious coverage increase of eleven hundred square feet. So previously it was nine hundred and seventy. So the threshold for minor development in Asbury is a thousand square feet. So I just wanted to point that out to you, something to consider moving forward if it's.
And that becomes more of a stormwater situation for us.
Yeah.
Actually, Mr. Benson addressed that. We do have a sister plan, but it hasn't been put forward yet.
Okay.
We do have a rock filled sister that will tie in the gutters and the leaders in the rear of the house.
Right, but what Doug is saying is that you'd be subject to a higher level of control if you cross that thousand square foot threshold.
Yes.
And right now with this plan, what did you say?
For some reason, there's a change in the square footage of impervious coverage. And again, I think it stems from this. Is the house really fifty seven feet long now or is it not?
It's, yeah, the overhang makes.
Right, so make sure, you know, dimensionally, we're capturing things accurately because you don't want to go over that thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's a thousand, the requirements increase and it requires retention of stormwater for an inch and a quarter rain over the roof area of all new pervious surface. So a thousand's the threshold.
And this plan is nine hundred, did you say?
Originally it was nine seventy and now it's eleven oh two. So it's over by a hundred and two square feet.
So basically what Doug is saying, you, you need to decrease your impervious coverage now.
And make sure, so this is something we didn't get to, the, the, you know, the plans show the driveway being widened.
It is the same width it is now. I want you to show that in the picture.
So again, the plans show that the driveway is going to be widened. So if driveway's not going to be widened, don't show it being widened. And that is going to totally translate to impervious coverage, so.
I thought the driveway is where the width is right now.
We just stay with the seventeen.
It is the width it is right now. There's a little bowing out.
Right, we just snatched it up.
There's this little radius and a dash line going straight back to the new garage. Two car wide. Two cars parked side by side is the note. So just make sure the plan is clear about the width of the driveway and its orientation that it's going to be maintained. If that's what you're doing. And just watch, watch that threshold for impervious.
All right, so we continue to ten eleven. I would no need for renoticing.
All right, so I'll make a motion to carry twelve fine Pine Street, Mr. and Mrs. Barnett to October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two without further notice.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, I'll make a motion to take a ten minute recess.
I'll second.
All right, let's get back. Mr. Beekman, would you call us back to order?
Sure thing. So we're returning to the regular reading. The August ninth, two thousand twenty-two is the only board of adjustments in all the role. Ms. Potter?
Yes, here.
Mr. Slick? Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Mr. Scully?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
And Sheriff alone.
Here. So we have a couple of recusals to let people know of. First, it will be Tim Slick. Will be recused from this next application as well as Russell Lewis. So you have four people.
Four of the last five.
So Kathy Morris and Deb Cuska.
Sorry. I appreciate you.
Sixty oh six Fourth Avenue. Welcome. Mr. Edinger.
Yes, Secretary Edinger pairing up the.
Please proceed.
Our first witness tonight would be Anthony Ercolino.
Perhaps we would start with Kathy Morris maybe, and then she can give the explanation of the property and, and then we'll move on to Mr. Ercolino.
All right, that's fine, Doug.
It's a double counter, Deborah.
Okay, that's fine, too.
The homeowners are here, Kathy Morris and Deborah Cuska.
Yes.
Deborah Cuska will testify first.
Great. And you swear affirming test, about to give the truth, the whole truth, not the other truth?
Yes.
And can you state your names for the record, just to.
Anthony Ercolino, the architect.
Deborah Cuska.
Thank you. And just wear our impressions as well. You swear affirming testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, not the other truth?
I did.
And save your names again for the record, please.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Doug Cleland, board engineer.
Thank you, Officer Edinger.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. Ms. Cuska.
Sure. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We're excited and appreciate your time. Kathy and I started looking for a, a house in Asbury about a decade ago. Started out as a search for a, a second home that would serve as a, as a beach house close to the shore. We looked in Asbury, we looked in Ocean Grove Bradley, and we kept coming back to Asbury Park. Initially, our focus was on the east side. We ended up on the west side. And as time had passed, we had lost several homes to the dividing process. But our focus in the search became not just a house, but, but a home.
When did you purchase the house?
We purchased the house in January of two thousand seventeen. So we lived in it for a year to just understand the house. But I have to say, within, I, I think, weeks of moving in, we, we learned much about our neighbors who, a couple of them are here to support us tonight. And we were really overwhelmed with, with the choice that we made and we're happy to be in, in Asbury Park on the location, at the location that we purchased. After living near a year, we sought to make some improvements to the interior of the house. Make it a little bit more functional. It was very choppy inside. And as we went through that process, it was, it's a sound structure, but the, the house itself and the site presented some, some challenges. We found some deficiencies with, within the, the construction that had, we had been a flip. So we were happy to correct those. We made the house what we believe more livable. And then some of the work then extended to the outside. When we moved here, the goal was to address the front, which we, it's, it's a challenging site. It's, it's steep and a steep front and a shallow frontage. We were going to keep that as the, the final part of our, our renovations. So we're here today to expand the porch. We're going to propose to expand the porch and, and reconstruct the, the front entrance. At present, it's, it's very steep. It's, it's unsafe. The, the structural issues occurring as time passes. So we're, we're eager to, to make those improvements. We feel that all the improvements that we've made thus far have, have not been detrimental. We feel that they, they have improved the, the property and have not negatively impacted our, our neighbors. Through all of the changes that we've made, we've worked very closely with the neighbors. And again, we're excited to, to move the, the next phase that's before us.
Thank you. That's a great synopsis. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Not really.
Does anybody, board professionals have any questions for Ms. Cuska? And in the public? Okay, let's move on.
Okay, Anthony Ercolino.
Anthony, could you give us the, your credentials, just a quickie?
Yes. I graduated from Pratt in nineteen eighty-seven, got licensed in nineteen ninety-two. Been practicing in the area since ninety-eight. At my old firm, Passman Ercolino Architects. And I've been before this board many times.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ercolino. We accept your credentials.
Has the, has this been marked already or?
Kristina, it's been marked.
It's, hasn't been marked that I see yet for the board. So this is just your original packet though, or is this the additional?
This is, this is the newest packet.
This is the newest.
The latest submitted. Does everybody have the revised packet?
I do. Does everybody else?
Marked July twenty eighth.
Kathy, what's the date on the revised?
July twenty eighth is the standard.
Yeah, July twenty eighth.
So I don't see that I have it marked. You have it listed though as A one, so we'll just. You don't have anything else premarked unless it's the first one in the application server. So we'll just start off with A one. I'm sorry. So A one and A two will be A one, A two, A three. And then the data of the plans. July twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two, marked as A one through three, the plans submitted by Passman Ercolino, Architect PC for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Beek.
Twenty eighth or twenty seventh? Since July twenty eighth.
I'm sorry, twenty eighth, then correction.
Do you have any way, Mr. Ercolino, putting that up on the boards or no?
Do not.
Okay, because it's a little hard to see. But can you bring it maybe closer?
I can't see it at all.
Okay, great.
I guess a lot of what, of what we did in the revisions was as a result of reports.
Yes.
Reports came in, I guess, the day of the last meeting that we ended up getting canceled for, so it gave us a little bit of time. So we scrambled, made that, made some modifications and then we submitted so that we would be in time for this, this meeting.
Okay, please proceed.
See if I can, if you want me to go through each, I guess, one of those points or?
Mr. Ercolino, if you could just describe the plan, just indicate what the applicants are proposing.
The reason Deborah and Kathy came to me was they wanted to add a portion of the front porch and modify the front steps. The front steps, if you've been out to the site, you'll see that there are some issues with it. It's a straight run. There is a landing midway, but it does continue out over the right away. It'll go all the way out basically to the sidewalk. So making modifications, we wanted to make it a little bit, not such a straight run. So we kind of zigzagged it a little bit to give it a little bit of movement and soften it so that it's not a giant set of stairs. That's why we kind of zigzagged the way the steps move going up to the current front porch. And in doing so, we're able to keep the steps behind the property line or the right away line. Mr. Ercolino, would you say that the, the best representation of the present condition would be shown in the memo that was provided by Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Miller? I don't know if that's the mark. We had been presented with a, a pretty, a good memorandum by your staff dated July twenty-two, which contains a photograph on, you know, third page that indicates the present condition.
We'll mark that as A four as it relates to the report that's submitted to the board.
Are you referring to Donna's report?
Yes.
So Mr. Ercolino, the porch is shown by the, the report that we received from Donna, correct? Yes. And that's been, that's addressed, one of the items addressed in your plan, right? Yes. Then while we were in the process of doing the front porch addition and the front steps, they asked me to create a covered area at a back, at a rear door. Door exiting the back of the house, wanted to have it covered for the weather. That's, that's basically the, just the whole project. So you can see I didn't even get into the interior of the house because it didn't matter. Everything I was doing was.
So if I understand correctly, the porch is staying where it is currently or is it being enlarged?
The front porch is being enlarged by four feet.
Four feet?
Yes. To the front, for a portion of it, not the entire width. The stairs stay recessed right where they, they start, right where they currently start. But just a portion of it is. It's about thirteen feet wide. Four feet out by thirteen feet wide is the addition to the front porch. Still staying behind the setbacks. We have no issue with the front yard setback for the house or the, or the porch itself. Mr. Ercolino, the addition to the porch that's shown on your diagram or your, your architecturals to the left of the, the drawn steps in the area that you've marked with dotted lines? Yeah, there's an X that says porch addition. It's fifty-three square feet. In making that adjustment, what was done with the stairway leading to the front of the house? We, we basically took half the steps down to a landing, similar to where that landing is located now. But then you come down the stairs, make a right turn and then a left turn. And in doing so, created a planter area out in front of the top set of stairs as you come down to the landing. Then there would be a planter area at the bottom. And then the stairs kind of wraps around and planted. Because of that area you're describing, it kind of is flat. It is a little, the planting area behind it, that's going to cover the, I guess, called porch foundation front. Yes, there was a portion of it. It does, it does step down the level. There's a couple of different levels that we're dealing with. You come down the steps from the porch to the landing level and then it kind of drops down. There's a railing in front of it, drops down to the planter level and then down the steps to basically the sidewalk level. See if I can show you on the elevation, you can see what those. So we have a porch level, which is. From the sidewalk to the front porch is about nine feet in elevation change. So that was one of the challenges of, of dealing with the stairs and how it can come down. So we would start at that front porch, come down those steps to the landing level. And then here's where that planter is down below. It's about a two foot wall from the sidewalk level at that planter level. Now, Mr. Ercolino, over the porch in the front, what, what is the plan for the roof area? It's a, it's a hip roof matching the existing hip roof. And that was one of the comments that we, we addressed from Clark Peytonhins. There's a previous proposal for a standing seam roof. Yeah, previously, so we got rid of that. And in regard, from an architectural perspective, the, the plan that you have proposed now for the.
And in regard, from an architectural perspective, the plan that you have proposed now for the roof?
It's in keeping with the existing roof. It'll be the same shingles, the same roof pitch, same style of roof.
And material?
The same shingle, roof shingles.
So it'll no longer be a standing seam roof?
Correct.
I feel like we're talking about extending out into the front setback again. Are we not, Mr. Urquillino?
No.
No, they're conforming.
Now, were there any other changes that were proposed for the front, any renovations?
Not necessarily to the, to the front, nothing substantial. I'm not putting a new front door on there. I guess the other issue is the, the cover area at the back door. And that's being handled without columns, we're going to do it with brackets.
In regard to the cover for the, the back door, that's a change, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there was no, that wasn't there previously?
Correct.
And does that change anything from an architectural standpoint for that, that back door?
Well, it changes the way you can come in and out of the door in terms of it covering you more than it currently does.
Would it be considered an improvement as to what?
I would agree, so in terms of the livability at the exterior, at the back of the house, yeah. You can certainly stand undercover without being in the rain and still grill or do whatever you have to do out there.
What's the total impervious coverage now?
Well, the impervious coverage now is 77.7, where it started out at 75.3. Now, the back roof doesn't do anything.
Started out at 75?
Yeah.
How did it start out at 75?
Currently, 75.3.
Is that what it was originally?
It's what it is before I got there.
And why is it that big?
Probably because of the rear patio.
There's a rear patio.
Yeah, so I realize most of the testimony has been about the improvements to the building and the, and the steps in the front. Do you have any information or have any professional involvement with the patio or the garden wall?
No.
Okay.
That's the survey.
So we may have to go back to the owners for testimony about that separately, but we can, we can wrap up his architecture testimony.
Okay.
So, yeah, in terms of that, that roof cover that we're adding in the back, it's over top of existing paving. We're removing paving and then adding some paving in the front, so there is a net gain of some, of some paving in the front.
And what materials are you using, Mr. Urquillino? For the front porch and?
The landing and the steps.
Yes.
Well, it's going to be masonry. Be masonry. Client wants to use bluestone treads. We have these piers covered front, which will be made of brick and kind of pull into the house. Wanted to lighten up for the face of the porch itself, wanted a few of those in stucco.
On the railings, you have a, it says a steel pipe rail.
Yeah, at that one location, because it's hot, behind the wall, and if you kind of, kind of see it here, there's, there's a wall that sticks out here. So it's, it's that one pipe rail there, and then there's another pipe rail at this point, because it's not required as a guard rail.
Okay, so it's just on the one side?
It's just on the one side.
And you couldn't use the white railing continuously down?
I guess we could. I don't know that it's going to look as, I don't know that it's going to look right, to tell you the truth. This pipe back here is connected to the side of this column, and then it comes down past this wall and connects it to the side of this wall. In terms of it being a spindle, it's, the spindles would all be behind this wall. It would, it would be next to, would be next to a protected wall. The ones at the bottom, I guess we could get away from the pipe rail there and try and do more of the same.
The pipe rail is just a handrail, basically?
Just a handrail. Trying to minimize it.
And you'd received the copy of the letter from, from the board, board professionals in regard to some, some comments that were made?
Yeah, there was, there was a comment regarding some of the drainage. You have, and I put in a limit of disturbance on here, so fast it'll rock around the work area. It equals about 750 square feet.
Is that the report from inside, then? Is that a different report?
Yeah, I think.
You're referring to inside?
I see it marked as A5 then for the report from inside.
This one's dated July 28.
Okay, that'll be marked, the report from inside, dated July 20, 2022, be marked as A5, thank you.
Yeah, you wanted us to note the proposed limit of disturbance on the front plan and square footage.
Could you also speak to the location of downspouts? Is that going to be changing at all?
I don't believe we're changing any of the downspout locations. The gutters will tap into the same downspouts.
We had the, we anticipated having the applicant testify in regard to what presently exists there for the downspouts, where the general flow of the water is currently from, from what exists. And that's not intended to be changed at all.
Thank you, Mr. Edinger.
There is some slight changing in the grading here, but it's all actually getting better. Right now, it kind of grades off on an angle towards the neighbor, and we're going to, we're proposing to have it, and so it'll come straight down.
I can see it's a very challenging property. I have no questions for Mr. Urquillino. Is anybody else on the board?
No.
Board professionals? Anybody in the public for Mr. Urquillino? Thank you. Okay, so maybe we can go back to talking about why you have so much impervious coverage.
Sure, just a second. The board has asked questions in regard to the pavers that are in the back. Could you just explain to them what existed, what you purchased, if you've done anything there, and just kind of explain the, you know, the coverage that's chose now?
So when we purchased the, the house, on the west side, from the driveway to the rear and the rabbit behind the house, there was, was concrete. Not in the best condition, but it was, it was paved along the entirety of the side of the house, and then in the back, 10 or 11 feet back from the house. At that point, there was the rear.
The whole, whole back was concrete, is that what you're saying?
No, no, about 11 feet from the house.
11 feet from the house.
And the whole width of the house?
The whole width of the house. At that point, then, there was a wall. The remainder of the yard was elevated.
A retaining wall, or?
A retaining wall. It was a three-sided retaining wall, so it's came off our rear corners on both the east and the west side, and then wrapped across, yeah, in the east-west orientation. So the, in essence, the whole yard was, was elevated, raised. That is matching the grade of the house behind us. The grade of the house to the east of us is, is lower. It matches what the finished grade was coming right out of the house, and then similar to the west of us. So in essence, it was just a raised stage backyard. What, it, it made the, the yard very unusable, because you walked out a couple of, 10 feet or so, and then you were, you had to go through a very narrow flight of steps up onto the elevated area. There was a tree that was growing out, or into the wall on one side, and parts of the wall had, had started to show deterioration. So we wanted to make the yard more usable, but we had to address the grades. So the intent was to push that, that grade back towards the rear of the yard. In doing so, we did not disturb the remaining portions of the sidewall. That remained intact. Fully on the east side, and then foundationally on the west side, and then we just connected those, those points. At the time that this was implemented, the code had not changed, and it was 100% impervious coverage. We did add a portion of, of pavers that had been turfed up on top of that, that raised area. But this, this made the, the yard much more usable. We do a tremendous amount of entertaining, large family barbecues and, and friend get-togethers, and that's why we're looking to make the front porch space a little bit more usable and livable as well. The, the pavers, though, along the side of the house were just replaced in kind with paving material. Again, we, we changed the grade in the back, retained existing retaining wall on the side yards. We did shorten that length of run. It, it had been much longer on the side yard areas, and pushed that rear retaining wall back towards the problematic, problematic area, having to match and marry into the house behind us.
So I mean, with.
So when, when did you do the, the rear yard work?
2020.
I had sent Michelle.
With that much coverage, impervious coverage, it becomes a, an issue for stormwater?
At the time, the code was 100%.
Well, no.
No.
At the time.
No, there was no code, 100%.
There was no, there was no code. There was no requirement to limit impervious coverage in the R zone, right?
It was just building coverage.
It was just building coverage.
Right.
Okay, I think, if I may, the, the house itself takes up a large portion of, of the property, just by the style of the house.
Yeah, you were starting out.
We're starting out behind the.
Behind the wall, right.
One of the deficiencies or issues when we had purchased the house, we knew there was water infiltration problem. We did not realize the severity. There was, there was one weekend, it was pretty entertaining, and it rained the entire weekend. I, I, with my guests, were on watch every 20 minutes to empty out a 20 gallon, a 30 gallon garbage can, because there was that much water penetrating through the walls. So we do have concern about water being near the house. I, I think it's just the nature of Asbury, there's, there's high water tables, but we had since corrected.
I'm sorry, where was that water flowing?
It was.
Into the house.
Out of the, like, through the wall into, into a bucket, a garbage can, 30 gallon garbage can, and every 20 minutes I had to set the.
Was that in your basement?
In the basement, to, to bail the water.
Was the water running down with the grade at the house? Is that what was happening?
It was, the, the previous owner, in an attempt, I mentioned, along the west side of the house, there was existing paving and concrete was pretty, it was in bad shape. Somebody tried to caulk the edge, I guess, you know, they, they knew there was water, water issue. Again, we, we appreciated that there was a water issue, but just did not appreciate the, how, how severe it was. At any rate, we, we did put in French drain, and there is, there is an attempt to try to keep the water from, you know, just riding down the, the foundation of the house. The basement has since been finished. There's a sump pump, you know, we've, we've been good, but that was just an experience that I do not want to repeat.
So where does the water divert to now?
It, it's all on our property. Very aware of, of not diverting water to the neighbor's property.
So where does the sump pump discharge to?
The sump pump discharges to the street when it, when it needs to go off.
Wow.
The house has gutters, correct?
The house has gutters, so with regard to the, the stormwater system, the gutters, there were four leaders at the corners of the house, one at each corner, and they were, they were piped down into the ground and, and out.
Out to the street?
Out to the street, and it was functioning. I actually upgraded one. There was an old clay pipe on the east side, and a portion of it was.
Terracotta, powder and sand.
Collapsed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have them too.
So, so it was just repaired, replaced in kind, or replaced on kind with terracotta, but with more modern material, and it.
PVC.
As Anthony had mentioned, the grade improvement.
Are you still getting that much water in the house?
No, no, we're not.
I don't even hear the sump pump go off.
I, I do test it. There is, there is water. I mean, this summer, I don't expect there to be a water issue. But that, that was one of the concerns, and it just, I don't know where that water was coming from, whether it was, you know, just carrying off the neighbors. But there is an attempt to manage the water, so that it is not damaging our, the interior of our property, or.
Why did you choose impervious pavers as a method to do your backyard? Why didn't you choose something that was a little bit less a problem?
Less of a problem? We do a lot of entertaining and just the hardscape.
But there's many types of pavers and many types of systems that could have been chosen.
There are, this is, that's, this is the route that we had, we had elected to.
So, and this was not, we didn't have the timing of, of when some of your improvements were made. So based on the testimony, the, the pavers are an existing non-conforming, non-conformity for, for the impervious coverage. If the accessory structure setback would have been the same prior ordinance, current ordinance, so that is still.
But they're asking for us to approve that now, correct?
Well, it, it's an existing non-conformity. It's being slightly adjusted because of the proposed work with the stairs in the front, and the new wall, and the, you know, the, that stuff, and the, and the new porch. That's contributing. So let me just see, so. 133 square feet, how much? I might need some math help. Of how much of the new building coverage and new stair and retaining wall area is the difference between the existing non-conformity and the, and the previous? Yeah, so. You know, it, it sounds like it's less than 100 square feet.
It's like 130.
Oh, I said it's 135.
133 square feet.
135, something like that.
Well, but it's 120 square feet for the, for the porch, right?
The current coverage is 4233.2, and the proposed is 4368. So that's.
Did you get that?
135.
But that's, that's impervious.
That's all impervious.
Which is counting some building coverage.
Yeah.
Right, so it's 100, 100, there's 120 square feet of building coverage, so the amount that's not related to the porch is like, less than 50 square feet.
Okay.
So. Say that one more time? So the new porch is 120 square feet. That's building coverage, which they need a variance for, but it's very, very minor, slight, right? They're increasing the impervious coverage by, was it 15 square feet, unrelated to the pavers? With the door, back door, is that what you mean?
No, with the.
With the steps.
With the steps and the, and the redesign.
The stuff in the backyard?
Right. Right.
Was allowed to happen. It's an existing non-conformity under the new ordinance. You can ratify it, sanction it, whatever, by saying, "All right, we're going to say it's a valid deviation now, since you're here, and we're looking at your plan." But it shouldn't really have anything to do with how you're approaching the stairs and the...
Which is why I thought maybe this should be bifurcated, that we should just talk about the front steps and the front porch, and not really talk about the back.
Well, they still need the variance for the wall, because that was a requirement prior, so that slipped through, apparently. So, the garden wall...
In the back.
In the back.
How tall is it?
20 inches, 20 inches.
Needs to be five feet from a side blot line, and it's not.
If I may, but the portion that is in question was existing. That did not move or was it changed?
Well, the intersecting piece changed.
The intersection?
Yes. So, again, the board can weigh that however it likes, as far as previous existing non-conformity, slightly modified. It does affect the, you know, setback, and it affects the impervious coverage marginally slightly.
Side yard setback, is that what you mean?
It's an accessory setback. So, again, the amount could be argued to be de minimis, which is insignificant amount. But, yeah, the overall, they started, you know, between the building and the pavers for impervious coverage were already over, and were allowed to be, they was grandfathered, so to speak.
And we're only increasing it by now 15 square feet?
Plus or minus.
Does the patio, as it's built now, does it drain out to the street, or does it remain in the back?
It remains on the property. It actually drains into gravelled areas. There's a bed that is catching a good portion of the water in one section, and then similarly on the side.
What do you think, Doug? I mean, in terms of, is there something else they could do to remediate it a little more in the back, or...
Yeah, it's hard for me to give an opinion on it, because it's, there's no topography in the backyard, so it's hard to say, you know, where the water's really going.
Right.
Sounds like maybe when this was installed, your contractor installed some type of system to catch some of that water, right, in order to try to protect some neighboring properties?
Yeah, it's not leaving the property. It's, there's a bed between, in the, what is that, the southwest corner of the property, there's, the patio does not go up against the wall, so it's pitching there, and it's going into a plant bed. And then to the east, where it bows in, you have that concave, it's flowing into the plant bed there. And there was conscious effort to ensure that the grade was higher along the property line so that the water would not sheet into the neighbors.
I know, without having the topography or the... And it's an after-the-fact kind of thing, so I'm just throwing out some ideas right now.
The ideal situation is to have that water make its way to the street, where it can be handled by the city's storm...
Sewer, sewer system, right.
Right. You know, it's hard to say what's out there, you know, how much these areas can absorb.
Right. It really depends, though.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's ways to get water with yard inlets out towards the street to, you know, make things a little more safe. If you get like a really bad rain event, it may work now, but, you know, if we get a 100-year storm event, where's all that water?
If we have another Sandy, or...
Yeah, and giving it an outlet to make its way out to the street will make everybody feel better, I think.
Would you be willing to put some type of outlet to the street from the back?
Just about to ask an engineer a question. Are you referring to both sides? Because the one side is... Please talk about both sides.
I was mainly referring to the back. It seems like that's what's having the most issue draining properly.
But you're referring to rather than the drainage to the front?
Yes.
And I'm asking you, are you suggesting both sides or just one? Because one side, it looks like there is sufficient, you know, area to do that. The other side doesn't appear to do that way.
So, the sidewalk, or the paved area along the west side of the house does pitch towards the driveway...
Okay.
Already. And then to your, in the plant bed, there is an inlet for water to drain. It's tied into the gutter system here. There was an inlet installed there, and then behind the wall, there was a perforated pipe to catch the water, so you alleviate the pressure on the wall. That was tied in, there is an inlet right here, and it's tied also to that gutter system, the leader system, yeah.
Those make their way to the curb?
That then goes down, outlets, or daylights here, and then there is an inlet here that ties to that leader, which then daylights. It's presently daylighting on the front lawn. The intent was that when this is all regraded, that would then daylight to the curb.
That's a lot better.
Okay.
That sounds better.
Yeah.
Do you need, I realized we were pointing out to your engineer. Do we need to show to you what...
I trust our engineer to review it properly, so...
Yeah, but I think if we, for like resolution appliance, we might want those...
Right.
Elements noted on your plan, so we just have it documented to support the testimony.
Okay. If I can't see them, how do I note them? I mean, it's one thing for a client to say, but if I don't see the drainage...
Right, he can't testify or...
Testify.
Yeah, he can't draw a plan.
You can, I mean, if it's okay, the client can mark up their drawing and show them where this stuff is.
Survey would be updated.
If I mark up plan, you take a picture of the location?
I mean, it can just be, if you take a copy of your survey, and you hand draw and note the infrastructure, and it's noted by you, I added these notations. We can accept that.
If that's acceptable, Mr. Beekman? Okay.
Great.
Were there any other questions for the applicant?
I have no further questions for Mr...
Neither do I.
For professionals, any further questions? Anybody in the public for Ms. Kuskot? Okay, all right. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Edinger?
No, no, I have nothing further to add. I think everything's been clear, and the professionals have dealt into it.
Okay. All right, so now we'll open it up to public comment. Are you ready, Wendy? I make a motion to open it up to public comment. If there's anybody in the public who would like to provide a comment either in favor or against this application, please come to the mic. Tim, you're recused. I don't know. Is that...
He actually can speak.
Kenny, okay.
Just so you know, too, there's a timer on the side, just for four minutes.
Yes, four minutes.
Hi, is this on? Is this on? Do you need me...
You got it? There you go.
Is it on? Yes. Hi, Robert DeSanto, 1619 Fourth Avenue. I live directly across the street from the applicant's. Everything that they've...
Wait, wait, Robert, he has to swear you in.
Oh, yes.
You swear a part of the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And again, just your name for the record.
Robert DeSanto, D.I.S.A.N.T.O.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. May I continue?
Okay, thank you. Everything that the applicant has done to their house since they've been there has been impeccable. I am excited to see this new stairway coming down, because we face it every single day as it is right now, and it's an eyesore, what they're going to do with it. We're very excited, because it's going to be, I anticipate, as impeccable as they've done everything else with their house. So, please approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear a part of the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Name at the record, please.
My name is Timothy Slick, 1619 Fourth Avenue, directly across the street, and I agree with Robert's statement. I am very pleased with what these ladies have done with their property, and I am in support of this application, and I ask you please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else in the public? Please step up.
Do you swear a part of the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
May I state your name, please, for the record?
Joanne McGlinchey, M.C.G.L.I.N.C.H.Y., 1608 Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
We actually adjoin Kathy and Deb's property. Our lives have been so much better since they moved in. They have made, they are...
That's interesting.
They're wonderful neighbors. They are, their design, their plans, everything they have done has made our property better. They have worked with us on everything they have done, and where those areas adjoin, and this question of impervious material, it has, there's a beautiful garden bed now that is now made better by the fact that we adjoin, and we share those, that area. So, everything that has been done on their property and our property has been done together, and we approve every plan that they have made, and they have great taste, and they have great taste in neighbors. So, we are, and my husband, Jim, says, feels the same way.
Thank you. And there's only one person left. Do you wish to say anything as well?
Hi.
How we doing, Wendy?
James McGlinchey.
Just raise your hand. Do you swear a part of the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And again, I'm sorry, your name's spelling your last for the record.
James McGlinchey, M.C.G.L.I.N.C.H.Y.
Thank you. You may continue.
Okay. So, that was my wife before me. I wouldn't dare disagree. Luckily, we agree on all that she has said. They've been great neighbors from the first day we bumped into each other, and we, all three couples here look out for each other when the other person's not away, not around. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll go back to Mr. Edinger. Do you have any closing comments, Mr. Edinger?
I know, as I indicated, I think they have grasped what the application's about and the improvement that's going to make to the neighborhood and to the house, ultimately the city itself. Thank you.
Thank you. So, back to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, I might just interject too, real quick. I think we just missed one thing at the beginning with the notices. Everything was in line and sufficient. I just want to get that. I didn't want to interject earlier, but...
Oh, my goodness, we would have had to start all over, Mr. Beekman.
Sorry.
Thank goodness, especially for the ladies.
That's why I didn't interject earlier, though.
Okay, so, any comments from the board?
I think that we should recognize the non-conformity and make it, what's the word? Formalize it. As far as the application, I'm in favor of it. It's a great improvement of活得 your house alive. I'm in favor of it.
I agree. I appreciate that you and your professionals looked at our board professionals' reports and took that into consideration and made some changes, and we appreciate that, and I'm also in favor.
I'm in favor. I think it's a very attractive design. I think that you had a challenge in front of you, and you did a beautiful job in meeting your needs and the needs of your immediate surrounding area. So, thank you for the accommodations that you made and the professionals' reports, and I'm in favor of the application.
And I have to say, Deb, you did a great job explaining everything, especially the backyard. I think you helped me decide even more so, and your wife must really be proud of you.
I am. You did a good job. Thank you very much.
You did a great job.
Yep.
So, based on that, I make a motion to approve 1606 Fourth Avenue.
I'll second.
Based on, are there any conditions that you have written, Chris?
I think it's just the thing about the drainage layout.
The leads, yeah.
Have that in there.
Yeah, just the survey. If you can, Deb, draw out those particular designs for those pipes and leads where they lead to.
I made a motion for that?
I made a motion to approve it, 1606 Fourth Avenue.
Second. All right, so, roll call for the vote. Ms. Potter?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Scully?
Yes.
Chair Appalotti?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.